Good evening to come to a city council meeting and thank everyone at home that's watching. We really appreciate the great fans we have at home that tune into our meetings. So, the first item is the roll call and Pledge of Allegiance. Will you hear the roll call, please?
Councilmember Peterson?
Here.
Councilmember Termini?
Here.
Councilmember Bertrand?
Here.
Councilmember Bottorff?
Here.
Mayor Harland?
Here. Will everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
We have a presentation tonight. Chief.
Good evening, Mayor Harland, councilmembers, staff. My name is Terry McManus, Chief of Police here in Capitola, and it gives me great honor tonight, and I consider it a great privilege to be here this evening to present to three individuals a life-saving award. And so, I'm going to invite to stand behind me Officer Craig Evans, Officer Jackie Young, and one of our wonderful citizens, Tristan Grell, to join me here behind the podium so I can make this presentation.
Sure.
On February 13th, 2016, so just about a year ago, Officer Craig Evans helped a family in distress that was in need of emergency medical attention. He found a vehicle blocking the roadway with the distraught family inside. A man in the backseat suffered a heart attack and did not show any signs of life. Officer Evans took quick action and performed CPR in the vehicle until a citizen, Mr. Tristan Grell, noticed that a police officer needed assistance and helped Officer Evans remove the man from the vehicle. Both Officer Evans and Mr. Grell administered CPR on the roadway until Officer Jackie Young arrived to help with CPR in emergency life-saving efforts. Due to other medical emergencies, an ambulance response was delayed for 10 minutes, during which time these three men worked as a team to save the victim's life. Now, that's 10 minutes of CPR, which doesn't seem like a long time, but when providing life-saving measures, that's an extremely long time, 10 minutes. When the ambulance arrived, the victim regained a pulse and began to show signs of life, undoubtedly the result of the rescue efforts of Officer Craig Evans, Officer Jackie Young, and Tristan Grell. The victim was quickly transported to the hospital where he underwent emergency surgery and ultimately survived the heart attack. These two Capitola police officers and Mr. Grell were extremely professional, committed, and exhibited a high level of willingness to work as a team. Your group effort stands as an example to all public safety and to all citizens. So, for your dedicated service to the Capitola Police Department and the citizens of Capitola, I proudly award, and I'll ask you to come up to me when I announce your names, I proudly award Officer Craig Evans, Officer Jackie Young, with the life-saving award and the life-saving medal for the Capitola Police Department. And a round of applause. And in addition, I proudly award Mr. Tristan Grell with a citizens' distinguished service commendation for your heroic actions on February 13th of 2016. On behalf of the Capitola Police Department and this city council and the entire city of Capitola, I'd like to extend my sincere appreciation to the three of you for your exceptional performance in saving the victim's life. Well done by all three of you. Mayor Harland, if you don't mind, I would like to enter the galley here and what we'll do for a photo opportunity. We'll have myself, the two officers, Mr. Grell, face the audience, take a photograph with yourselves and the beautiful art as the backdrop, and then I'll invite the family up to do the same photo. So, just a couple of minutes to take a couple of pictures, if you don't mind.
No, that's fine.
All right. Thank you very much.
We've been window dressing before, it's okay.
Would the officers like to say anything, or our distinguished citizen like to say anything? Probably never thought you'd have to do that. Probably thought you'd never have to do that, but it's wonderful that you know how to do it. Now, if I can invite Tristan's wife, Kate, and your two beautiful kids, Lucas, who's seven, and Juna, who's five years old, come on up. Jackie and Craig, come on up, we'll take a picture together. Why don't we take a picture of the family first, and then we'll bring you guys in.
We're here for you, chief.
Thank you very much. Next is a report on closed session.
Thank you, Mayor Harland, members of the city council. There were several items on this evening's closed session, which commenced at 5:45 PM in the city manager's office. First item was a real property negotiations item involving the parcel of real property at 2091 Wharf Road, Capitola. City council received a report and gave instructions to its negotiator in regard to that property involving the potential acquisition of the property. Second item was an anticipated litigation matter involving the considering of initiating litigation, one case of potential litigation, and the council received a report from the city attorney's office on that item. There were also two items of pending litigation on this evening's closed session. The first item was the City of Capitola versus Water Rock Construction Case, currently pending in the Santa Clara County Superior Court. The second matter was the pending case in the Santa Cruz County Superior Court entitled City of Capitola versus DeAngelo. In the first pending litigation matter, the Water Rock Construction Case, the city council authorized the city attorney's office to seek appellate review of an order granting a motion to compel arbitration and denying a city motion for preliminary injunction in the Santa Clara County Superior Court in the Water Rock case. And otherwise, there was no reportable action in closed session this evening.
Thank you very much. Additional materials. We have some additional emails.
Yes. We had five items that were distributed to agenda packet members, the council, and are available in the back with the packet. For item 8A, we received public comment regarding an appointment to the planning commission. For item 9A, you have an amendment to the proposed draft minutes. For item 9C, there is the revised draft calendar reflecting a date change to the budget proposed. For item 9C, oh, forgive me, that was 9C. Item 9D were the plans for the 41st Avenue Adaptive System. And for item 10B, we have a letter from Verizon in support of the amended ordinance you'll be considering this evening.
Thank you very much. Additions and deletions to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do request that item number 10A be continued to January 26th, which is next council meeting, due to a noticing error.
Thank you. Public comments. This is the time for the public to address us on any issue not on the agenda. If you want to speak about an item on the agenda, please wait till we get to that. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council. My name is Lori Hill, and I am the president of the Capitola Begonia Festival for 2017. This is Teresa Green, the past president of the Begonia Festival for 2016 and 2015. We are here to announce that the Capitola Begonia Festival will be returning on Labor Day weekend for its 65th annual festival. We are very much looking forward to it. We should be announcing the theme for that festival next week. The nautical parade is always the highlight of the festival, and nearly every Capitola resident has memories of being either a part of the parade, picking blossoms, or just coming out and watching it. If you have, you know, any thoughts about how many people are interested and impacted by the Begonia Festival, we've always said it was countless, but if you go to our Facebook page, you will find that over 38,000 people have clicked on our press release for 2017. And our press release for 2017 is that begonias used to grow all over Capitola, up on the 41st Avenue area. And by the mid-'70s, all of those begonias moved down to the area Marina, and the one company that continued to give us access to their fields for the blossoms for our festival was a family called the Brown Ranch Family, and they are now known as Golden Staple. They contacted us just recently and told us that they are going out of the business of growing begonias. Cala lilies are their mainstay, and begonias are not. They are retiring from that business. Therefore, the 65th in 2017 Begonia Festival will be our last. And so, we're here to let you know, let anybody know who's watching it, and place it on the record that we want everybody to come out and enjoy this festival. We want folks who have been involved in the festival for over six decades to, you know, get in contact with us, share your memories, share your photos. We want to make this festival the very best and to celebrate all of the wonderful years that we've had with the begonias. Teresa, would you like to add anything?
No, I think it just covers it all.
So, if anybody has any questions or comments, they're welcome to contact the Begonia Festival website and leave us a message there, and we'll be glad to get back to them. But please come out and enjoy the 65th and final festival.
Thank you so much for all of your hard work.
Well, I did want to say one more thing, that Worth Brown was asked, you know, where else could we find begonias for the festival? And he kind of scratched his head and said, "Well," he said, "we are the last commercial growers of begonia bulbs in North America and perhaps the entire Western Hemisphere. We won't be finding any local begonias in the near future." Thank you.
In our gardens. Thank you very, very much. Who else would like to come up and speak?
Could I have that box? Yes. Marilyn Gray. That was very impressive, the award for saving someone suffering a heart attack. And I was listening with great interest also because of this article called, it's from electromagnetichealth.org, it's related to heart attacks. New study, carrying a cellphone in a backpack leads to blood abnormalities. And there are pictures taken here of blood cells, and I had live cell analysis done years ago where the nutritionist took a sample of my blood, looked on the computer screen, and said, "I see some undigested protein here. I think you could use some digestive enzymes." So, it was used for a nutritional analysis. It was a familiar picture to me. So, this one shows blood cells before and after exposure to cellphone radiation. And what happened was the blood cells, instead of being, I'll give you copies, circular with a ring around it, the shape and the size have changed, and some were sticky cells, indicating the cells are not functioning properly or letting in the oxygen. You can see a little better with my glasses here. So, this part here, it says, note, "The authors indicate it is probable the blood changes observed would affect blood circulation. As red blood cell aggregation is well-known to diminish microcirculation, blood cell aggregation increases blood viscosity, and this impairs blood flow since blood viscosity and blood flow are important factors in heart attacks and strokes. The results of the study suggest that circulation risks from cellphone exposure may be important information for anyone with a circulatory disorder or history of either of these conditions to know. Moreover, it is worthwhile to consider these findings in light of the fact that cardiovascular disease is the number-one cause of death in the United States." So, we have to ask ourselves, what are some of the causes of increased heart attacks? I know a lot of us suffer heart arrhythmia from being exposed to radiation from cellphones from so-called smart meters, et cetera. So, this is a big factor. And a friend of mine came over to the house once when my father was still around to visit. I said, "Marilyn, I have such pain." And he had the pain going from his heart diagonally across. He was about ready to go to the doctor, and I said, "Tony, get that cellphone off. Your body was right over his heart." So, this is something for people to be aware of. Thank you.
Very much. Would anyone else like to speak? Then we'll go on to city council comments. Are there city council comments?
I just have one quick notice. I got an email about 6 o'clock tonight, pretty good news. I guess Barack Obama, in his last days, made the To Tony Coast Daries a national monument, declared that at 6 o'clock tonight, so that's good news for Santa Cruz County. It will now be protected as a national monument, so pretty exciting.
Very good. Sean?
Yeah. So, it was nice to read in the Santa Cruz Sentinel, something else the police in Capitola did, a lady apparently was stranded on Park Avenue at night, and a police officer came by and stayed there until an emergency vehicle could come and maybe AAA, I don't know, and deal with the situation. So, I got an email, a couple, all of us got the same email, actually, and apparently some other city council people phoned up the person who sent in the email, talking about some of the hazards of the rail line. And after receiving some thoughtful comments, some might say it's complaints, but I think they were pretty well-placed, but before he hung up, he said, "You know, I have something to say about the police here in Capitola. They're doing a great job." Thank you.
Mike?
I have a few for you. Number one, we had a library meeting last night, and we presented the design for the new Capitola library and some of the options. It was attended by 40 or 50 people. It was lively, it was positive, there were a lot of good suggestions, so it's moving right along. Things are going well. I would like to place in the future agenda a letter of support for the consolidation of fire districts. We've been asked by Central Fire District to support, and we did, to go forward and consolidate with Aptos La Selva. I think it's a positive thing for everyone and gives better fire protection for the entire, this entire area. And lastly, and the most exciting, I was as distressed as everyone to hear about the last Begonia Festival. So, as of yesterday, in meeting with a few people, we didn't find a lot of begonias hiding anywhere. What we did do is we engaged the Chamber of Commerce, and the Chamber of Commerce is willing to continue the begonialist festival with flowers of another type, keeping the horseshoes, the rowboat races, the fishing derby, the sandcastle, especially the nautical parade, hold it on Labor Day weekend. So, we will not have two weekends of festivals that hold the art and wine on the same weekend. So, it'll all be rolled into one, we'll be relieved of one weekend of torment as citizens, and we can keep this thing going.
I've also talked to some citizens who have some good ideas. They don't want to just let it go. They want to, they want to continue having some sort of community spirit event here with music and food and the nautical parade and flowers and sandcastles.
It can still fit in very nicely. It all happens on the beach and the river, and we won't have to have 22 people on a Begonia Festival committee that gets, that works extremely hard for an entire year, and it'll be well-funded, and it'll be a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Great. Tristan, do you have anything?
No, I don't have anything tonight. I have just a couple. I wanted to thank all of the utility workers who were out in the last week or two trying to hook us back up to power. We were okay here in Capitola, I think, for the most part, but you know, you saw the stories and the pictures around the rest of the county, and those are, those are some local heroes, too. So, I just want to send a shout-out to the PG&E and the utilities and the telephone company and everybody else who's out there trying to just keep the power running and the roads clear and so forth. So, I'm really happy that we have such wonderful workers that do that. I wanted to read a little bit of a tribute to Wayne Fontz. Wayne Fontz passed away last week, and I just want to read a little bit of this. "If you've lived in Capitola for more than a decade, chances are you've run into Wayne Fontz, an on-and-off resident of Santa Cruz County since 1936. Fontz lives today in the home of Capitola baseball legend Harry Hooper. Perched on Cliff Avenue by the village, the home has a sweeping view that seems fitting for a man who has watched the city grow up and who played a role on how it became what it is today. You would have met Fontz if you were sent to the principal's office while a student at Capitola Middle School in the 1970s, or if you went to a school board meeting in the '80s and '90s. He held long tenures on both these roles. No stranger controversy, Fontz also served on the Capitola City Council in the late '60s during the time when meetings were a stand-up and shout affair. And he also came to many of our meetings in recent years. As long as his resume, Fontz remains quick with words and full of great stories. Beyond that, he also was involved in a period of Capitola's history that is poorly recorded, yet set the stage for many developments that followed shortly. There were no organized groups then, Fontz said. It was a time when rowdy and raucous bars dominated the now-quiet village, and the rumble of motorcycle gangs shattered the nighttime quiet along Monterey Avenue. It was also a time when developers wanted to build high-density housing along Capitola's eastern shoreline and the city's historic esplanade. During his council tenure, Fontz sought to defend the village's historic character, sparring with officials and community members who wanted to build multi-story buildings on the footprints of beach cottages that were being demolished left and right. Fontz survived all those years in the hot seat without losing his sense of humor, and he says his years as a scrappy young boxer hammered home the ability to stay cool, calm, and collected under pressure." So, I'm not going to read the rest of this, but it's, this was a wonderful article that was in the Mid-County Post, and a wonderful, you probably can't see this, wonderful picture of Wayne, and he was scrappy. He was, he was absolutely wonderful, and he contributed so much to this city and this community in so many ways, and I'm going to try to think of some way that we can have some kind of a tribute and have a gathering of his family or something here to, to give some sort of recognition, because he was part of everything in the city for 50 years, 60 years. So, very important citizen in Capitola, and we will miss him. He had a great sense of humor and would come down to council meetings with lots of energy and ready to fight or ready to speak up, and he was just, just a gem, just a treasure, and we'll, we'll really miss him. He and his wife and family are treasures in Capitola. Okay, I forgot to ask the chief to come up and report on the railroad. Our experience, I was going to do that under public comments, but I forgot. We'd like to know, how was our experience with the Polar Express train?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I don't necessarily for this evening have a report prepared, but I know there are some questions with regard to the police department and calls for service related to the train operation sometime at the end of November through the, the end of the program. We did, in fact, receive some calls for service that we responded to, specifically the intersection at 41st and the railway, 47th, and then up here on Monterey. Three calls for service with regard to the crossing arms failing, and each time the officers responded and connected with Iowa Pacific to see if we could, and we did request their response to actually handle the mechanical side of that arm failure or the bells failure. The most recent call for us was on the 28th of December, and that was because of the extended time period that the bells were sounding up here on Monterey. And so, to answer your question, we had some calls for service, not a large number. We also had some complaints come to the attention of the police department. Some equipment of some sort fell from the trestle to the ground, that we became aware of that. And then some general complaints that we became aware of through the police department with regard to displeasure of the operation of the train during that time period.
Good. Well, maybe we can review it at another time, because we'll probably be asked next year whether we want to do it again, and we might want to have some information about that, what our experience was like this year, and why we would want it or wouldn't want it again next year.
We, Madam Mayor, we may want to underscore now, this was a misconception by a lot of folks in Capitola that we allowed the train. We really have no control over the rail line. We don't own the rail right-of-way. We could have freight trains running 24/7 without this council's approval. We could express our displeasure, but that would be about as much as we could do.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments about that? Thank you very much.
I will, since you brought it up. On a, on a good note, I happened to go down to the boardwalk and I bought a ticket, and I took advantage of, after walking over the trestle many times, I've never ridden over the trestle on a train, so I invoked the Polar Express and went to the North Pole, and although there was a little bit of rocking of the trail, it was explained to me that you have freeways and you have streets and you have dirt paths, and our track is considered a dirt path, so the expectation of going fast on that is not. But it was a pleasurable experience, and it may or may not return again for any number of reasons, but I was glad I took the ride.
Good. Good. Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Thank you very much. City treasurer comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have three, three items I'd like to address based on citizens who have approached me about concerns. First one involves the wharf. Obviously, since Measure F was in the news and on the ballot, questions came up about that, and specifically about the funding of the wharf that, that exists, namely the bait shop rents and the restaurant rents. And the question came up is, are those lost in the general fund, or are those in fact maintained and accounted for? And the answer is yes, they're very carefully accounted for. There's, there's an account, 3620, there are seven line items underneath that item, all of which are associated with the wharf, and so, any monies that are removed from those accounts would have, would be tracked carefully and would require, obviously, the approval of the council or the city manager. So, it isn't, doesn't disappear in a slush fund, it's, it's there and, and we can account for it. Second question came up about credit cards, that there was a concern that the new treasurer should keep an eye on if there were any credit cards being misused in the, in the city, and so I did, I looked into that, and sure enough, found out that we do have three credit cards, two in the city manager's office and one in the police department, and they're very carefully safeguarded, there are, at least two of them are checked out and carefully monitored. The invoices from those credit cards are coming from Wells Fargo. I looked at those, I looked at those invoices, or well, not all of them, but I spot-checked those invoices and found that they're, every item is detailed, and was pleasantly surprised also that every item I looked at also had an expense report or an explanatory note associated with its use. So, the credit cards, for all those who are concerned, are being very well-managed, in my opinion. And finally, the question came up about our continued use of Wells Fargo as our bank. And as you may recall, last October timeframe, there was a big controversy and scandal associated with Wells Fargo and their investment shenanigans, if I have to use the word, controversy maybe is a better word, but, and in fact, at the time, the Santa Cruz Sentinel came forward and asked Capitola, well, what Sentinel came forward and asked Capitola what we were doing about our involvement with Wells Fargo. And, and the response at that time was, was, was written, and in, in summary, what involved three reasons why we want to continue with Wells Fargo. One was that we don't invest with Wells Fargo, they are a daily banking facility, but as you all know, we use LAIF, for L-A-I-F, as our investment vehicle, and so there's no concern that our investments will be mismanaged. Second item was that it's, it's generally, it's difficult to get banks to deal with cities because of the special governmental regulations associated with those, and so there's only a handful of banks that are willing to do business with us, although the citizen pointed out that Bank of the West was another bank that we could pursue if we did, in fact, want to move to another bank. And finally, the third answer for keeping with Wells Fargo was that the basic change over costs, the administrative costs of, of just changing over to a new bank would be not trivial. So I talked with Mark Welsh about this at length, and my conclusion was that I, I saw no reason from a safeguarding our funds standpoint from moving from Wells Fargo, and I'm willing to leave it at that. However, since we do have a new city council, I'd like to make you all aware that there are some citizens, or at least one, who is concerned about our continuing to use that bank. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other staff comments?
Staff has no comments.
Then, if there are no other public comments, then we'll move on to item eight, boards and commission committee appointments. So we have a list of committees, and we want to choose the ones that we want to be on and, and reappoint council members or others tonight if we're ready to, if people need more time to finish interviewing people. We can, we can leave some of them to the next meeting, and there's not a big rush for any of these. So what I did is, I looked at the, took some time yesterday to look at the committees that everybody's on, and I thought we might want to take a look at spreading it out a little bit more, because Mike has a lot, Jacques doesn't have too much, I have some, Ed has two big ones, and we need to give Kristin some work. So just with that thought in mind, we can go through these and see where we'd like to, where we'd like to go. So Linda, do you want to do this?
Yes, Madam Mayor, if you'd like, we may begin with the predominantly citizen committees that are advise the council. I think we have them up in alphabetical order. The first is the Architectural and Site Review Committee. This is described and staffed by professional members of the community to fit the needs of that committee. We have four members who have asked for reappointment, and we still have a vacancy in the landscape architect, so staff is recommending that the four existing members be reappointed to that commission. And if, if you want, you know, we can group pieces and do a larger motion for reappointment, and we can go through and make notes as you go along. Art and cultural, we will have some folks for you next time. They're interviewing next week, correct? The Commission on the Environment has several appointments, as well as a representative from the council. So if Councilmember Bertrand is interested in being reappointed, he is the current city council representative, and we also have three members of the community who are, ask for reappointments, and a new applicant, a first-time applicant as well.
Madam Mayor, first, I'd like to nominate Jacques if he'll do it to continue, because the continuity is important on art and culture, or on Commission on the Environment.
Do you want to do it, Jacques?
I'd like to demur for a second. I'm sorry, what was that?
I'd like to make up a line on that one.
We'll, we'll go on to the next.
But I would, I would also like to take Kristin Sullivan, since she is Norton's appointee, and I'm losing Amy Forrest because she resigned, I believe.
That's what we're saying.
So then I would like to take Kristin Sullivan as my appointment to the Commission on the Environment.
I was interested in appointing Kristin, too, and I think we need some more applications for this. So what I'd like to do is wait to see if we get some more applications from the public.
Well, that's, that's fine for your appointment, but I've just appointed Kristin, but thank you.
Do we have, do we, are we constrained by only having one council member on there?
That is, I believe, the description of the commission.
It says, um, it shows.
That there is a single, a single city council representative.
You can have more than one, but can't be more than two. I mean, certainly two council members can attend.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I just wanted to bring that up. Okay, so we'll go on to the next one?
Well, at this point, Mayor Harland, you have an applicant who has asked to be reappointed, and Councilmember Bodder, if you have a member who's asked to be reappointed, are you ready to make?
Yeah, I was reappointing Peter Well.
And Mayor Harland, do you wish to make your appointment at this time, or?
Yes, I'll, I'll reappoint Mr. Muzimder.
And Councilmember Peterson, have you had a chance to review, and would you like to make an appointment at this time, or would you like us to continue recruiting?
Yes, I'd like to appoint Kathleen Atchinson.
Okay, then we have our four city council appointments, and Councilmember Bertrand is waiting to see where other pieces shake out for this evening. On the Finance Advisory Committee, we have two council member representatives, the mayor or his, or her appointee. The vice mayor last, it was the appointee last year, the vice mayor is now that.
Still there, right.
And would you like to be?
Yes, please.
Okay. So that is reappointment. And all of the existing members have asked for reappointments, which would make a full contingent.
I'll reappoint Will.
And I'll reappoint Bridget.
And Kristin, you have an appointment?
Yeah, I'd like to make a new appointment. Marilyn Warder applied for an appointment to another commission, but after discussion we felt that she would be most appropriate on the Finance Advisory Committee, and I would like to appoint her.
Very good.
Madam Mayor, will you be attending the Finance Committee, or will you be appointing someone?
I was thinking about appointing, well, I, I appointed Will.
No, no, you're, you're.
Right, and then for the mayor and vice mayor, you're on there. Are you interested in continuing?
Mm-hmm.
Is there another council member that would like to be on? Jacques, oh, you're, well, you're already on. Well, you're on.
No, he would be your appointment.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, yeah, that would be.
Are you ready for that?
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's great. Okay.
So, so Jacques will be the mayor's appointment. Thank you. On the Historical Museum Board, we have no action at this time, though I'm happy to report that they have also had recent applications, so we hope to bring some of those forth soon. For the Library Advisory Committee, Councilmember Termini has been our, the council member representative, and then we have several council appointees as well. Councilmember Termini, are you interested in continuing that?
And I'll reappoint Tony.
Okay.
And I'll reappoint Ariel Gray.
And I'd like to appoint Steve, Steve Walsh, Stephen Walsh.
And I'd like to appoint Lisa Steinberg.
And Councilmember Termini, you also have an appointment. Would you, your current representative, Gail Ortiz, has asked for reappointment. Are you interested in the appointing at this time? Thank you.
Yes.
Well, that's right. For the Planning Commission, we have four appointees who have asked for reappointment, and then we have two new applicants as well. What is the council's pleasure?
I'll be reappointing Linda Smith.
Okay.
I'll be reappointing T.J. Wilt.
I'll be reappointing Ed Newman.
I'll reappoint Susan Westman.
I'd like to appoint Sam Story.
Very good, thank you. Public Safety, does Councilmember Termini, and your, your growing list, is that?
Yes, Madam Mayor, it's been the, our custom to have not only a council member on there, and I, I'm the president of the foundation right now, but also to have a second council member, and it has been Councilmember Brabatov. But I believe that he's interested in relinquishing that space, and I would like to request.
I would say, I resign.
Resign, right. That our newest council member, Kristin, because of her long experience and family ties with, with the public safety and police, be at my side of the foundation.
Do we need two council members there?
We don't need it, but it's available.
I'd be happy to do that.
It's a positive thing. It gives some bulk and force to the.
Yeah, good, good. I'm, I'm always a little concerned when we have two council members on a committee, because it can get a little shifted that way, or the weight can go over that way a little bit, and other people may feel a little.
New police chief needs that support.
Yeah. And judging from the other members of the committee, we can't throw our weight around enough to overcome them, trust me. It's not going to happen.
Excellent. And then we have the Traffic and Parking Committee. We have a combination of descriptions of village, two village residents and two village business owners, both have asked for re, to be reappointed. Each of you has your own appointees, and in addition to those that have asked to be reappointed, we have two new applicants as well who have asked to be considered. So first, does the commission wish to reappoint the village and resident and business representatives?
I'm just going to bring up something. We bring this up every year, and, and we would have to agendize this, but I'm going to bring it up again, and that is always, this is a large committee that involves a lot of time of staff and citizens, and I always wonder about whether they're being productive and what they're doing, and whether we have a need for them. So if, if the will of the council to put this on the agenda to discuss whether we could put this committee on hiatus, I would, I would be willing to debate that topic.
Jacques?
I attended, I believe, their last meeting for Christmas season, and I was very impressed with the committee action. Currently, right now, they're working on a survey, a parking survey for employees of the businesses downtown. Now, that has yet to be presented. My impression was that they're very active and very serious about their position.
Okay. So we'll reappoint.
I, I, I'm not saying it's not worthy of discussion, Ed, but I just want to give you my opinion.
I brought it up for, to see if anybody else wanted to put it on the agenda. If there's no other majority of opinion to put on the agenda, then we can just move on and reappoint.
Well, I, they need to meet every month, maybe they can meet every other month.
I have no problem with this committee existing. I think that it could probably use some freshening up, and I think after we do our appointees, perhaps we should all review the appointments that are not our personal appointees, village residents, business owners, and just open up that process and try and get some fresh blood into there. Just a thought. That would, that would speak to Jacques and Ed both. And I will reappoint Nels Westman.
I am switching my appointment to Ron Burke.
I'll reappoint Doug Tom.
I'll reappoint Ron Graves.
I'd like to appoint Molly Ording. And is it the will of the council to continue recruitment for the village resident and owners?
I would think so, and then we could bring it back and review that and appoint those members afresh.
Did we do any recruiting? We did some recruiting for this.
We did do recruiting. We, the only applicants that we had were those wishing to be reappointed, but we can reopen.
Yeah, let's see what's available.
Recruitment. And we do have two new applicants that applied at large. I don't believe either of them fall into those specific categories. So we have, so we have our five council member appointments at this time.
Do, do they need to meet in the next month? They're, they're meeting next week, aren't they?
Twenty-six, I believe.
Actually, we're supposed to have a meeting yesterday, but canceled because of the library meeting. Currently, they are scheduled to meet right before our next council meeting, because they have an item on that agenda, so.
You think they need to meet every month or every other month?
We meet every other month right now.
Okay.
And actually, one of the items on their next agenda is talking about going to quarterly meetings, actually.
Okay, good. Well, so maybe we should just reappoint these other people and, and let the committee continue for a while, and then we'll, we can re-advertise later and see what we want to do after they, if they change their schedule?
We, I believe we would have the option of reappointing for a, a shorter term as well. I would have to look at what the, what the code said, or that these would continue until such time as we have additional applicants and just postpone.
That's fine, too.
The reappointments.
No, I know, but it's, it'd be awkward if, if they, they start and then we take applications and then we replace them.
No more awkward than us nominating someone else right now. I don't know. Either way, I haven't given them a lot of thought.
I would make a motion if we go ahead and continue with the existing appointments and let the committee decide if they want to minimize, if, if they take an action on their own, that'll preclude us from taking any action. It sounds like they might be heading in that direction.
That sounds good.
Okay, thank you. And we have the Wharf Working Group, which has two council members, one which is an open position.
Do they ever meet? Meet the Wharf Working Group?
You know, we do meet, and I'm perfectly willing to relinquish that position to someone else if someone so chooses to get involved with that.
I was on it years, years ago, but whoever's interested.
It's a good group. It meets every, every month or, or two, and especially with the, with the new wharf project coming forward, the group would be a lot more vibrant. So there's two positions open. Any two council members want to jump in there?
Anyone else interested?
I'll jump on that.
Okay, Kristin, anyone else? I'll do it for now, and then if anyone else wants to switch out, you know, later on, we can always do that.
It was mentioned I was doing a lot. I'm trying to step back and let others, but I'm not feeling the love, that's okay.
Do you want to continue?
I can, I continue with Kristin, if you want.
Good, go right ahead. Yeah, perfect.
Okay, so.
I'm sorry, I thought you said you didn't want to.
No, I was just lea, I was just opening up for.
Okay.
And moving on to the county and multi-county boards. Those that are highlighted are those that we are asked to take action on tonight. We have an open spot in the Arts Council. That had been filled by former council member Norton, so that is, I believe they meet every other month, but.
Anyone interested in being on that?
I'm trying to contact some citizens I know that might be interested, so leave it open.
Yeah.
Okay.
We can recruit for that.
We could also ask for a volunteer from the Art and Cultural Commission as well.
Yeah. Does it have to be a council member?
I don't believe so, because Kelly Barretta was our representative for a while.
Yeah, I do believe there's a history from Art and Cultural.
Oh, okay, let's advertise and see if somebody wants, from the Arts Commission wants to be on it.
The next item is on two. And I am assuming if your name has been on there, that it, and it says you are continuing, that you are interested. Please interrupt and, and speak out if there is an appointment that you currently have that you would like to offer the opportunity to other council members. The Integrated Waste Task Force does need reapplication current. I believe that is represented by our assistant to the city manager, Larry Laurent, and the mayor is currently the alternate, and that is the recommendation, unless we have.
If someone else would like to be the alternate, they're welcome to do it. If not, maybe we'll just keep it the way it is? Okay.
Before we do regional transportation, we, we crossed over Criminal Justice Council. I'm the representative on that. Does anybody else want it, or otherwise I'll continue?
No.
I see no one.
How often do they meet?
Quarterly.
Yeah.
And no one else wants it, then I'm still there? Um, I-
I talked to Jamie about that, and he said I could take his place, so it'll be you and I.
Oh, okay, great, great.
I mean, confirm with Jamie, he might have forgotten the conversation and his angst over his operation coming up, but please confirm that.
He could've been speaking from a place of pain.
Yeah.
Very good. So regional transportation, we had a representative and an alternate currently open.
I've been the alternate for four years. I'd be glad to take the lead and would look for someone to be my alternate and attend the meetings with me.
I'd like to be in the lead, and I'll think about the alternate depending on the council's vote.
So that means we had a nomination and a vote?
I think, was it Kirby was on that for many years, and then Dennis patiently waited for his turn, and I think Councilman Terminy's been waiting patiently for his turn to be on that committee, but that's, I think that, I mean, you know, it, and I think that-
It requires some continuity.
Yeah.
But that's just my, my outlook.
Well, my only, my only concern is that, as I said at the beginning, I wanted to kind of split up some of these big ones, because some are, some committees are definitely harder than others. They require much more preparation and and so forth. And so Jacques is not on any big ones.
I don't know any other big ones I'm on, and I keep on trying to offer up committees, and Jacques has been laying in wait for RTC, and I've been the alternate for the last four years, but if this commission or this body wants Jacques to walk in there cold and be the RTC rep, I'm not gonna go against the will of the council.
Well, there is, there is a lot to say about the history of this commission, but, and it is extremely complicated, but-
There's a lot going on. I mean, with Measure D passing, it's gonna become a very interesting committee.
I know, I know, but the only, my problem is Jacques wasn't on any big committees for the last two years, and I wanted to try to get, steer him into something big, something important.
What thing important does it like to-
I don't know what the definition of a big committee is. He's on the Finance Committee, but as far as I'm concerned, it's a good committee for-
No, that's not a big committee. It doesn't take, it's important, but it doesn't take a lot of preparation. But, you know, the big ones are the Library and RTC and the Metro and and LAFCO and Ambag and, you know.
And we do need an alternate for RTC as well, so.
So anyway, Jacques's not in any, any big ones, and so that's why I was, you know, supporting that he gets some big committee that he wanted.
Well, my term expires on LAFCO in a year, and if Jacques wants to become the alternate on LAFCO, he can fill in for that.
Isn't that rotated?
It does, but, I mean, I, my first two years, I was an alternate. I mean, and when I was the alternate, I was, half the time I was up with the dais, so, you know, I'm, I'm not married to that committee. It's just the term fills out at the end of this year, so. And I don't know if you consider it a big committee, I mean, I-
Yeah, LAFCO's, yeah.
Quite frankly, I mean, it's not, most of the meetings have been canceled over the past year, and the only-
I know, but when it's busy, it's burlberry. Yeah. Well, you wanna make a pitch, Jacques?
Yeah. Everyone I talked to on the RTC, not everyone, I haven't talked to the whole group. The one thing that concerns me is, I think there's some neighborhood issues in Capitola that aren't really being paid attention to. One that came out in Vision Capitola is quite a bit of interest in an alternate look at the rail trail issue. There's another aspect of that that concerns me, and I believe that the RTC has pushed the Polar Express on the community without taking adequate issues with public safety. I voted for the Polar Express, even though, as Mike pointed out, we don't have any say over that, and I voted for it because I went around and talked to a lot of neighbors in Capitola along the rail, and, you know, I made my decision based on that input, and I think it was a good decision. But I also didn't know that the RTC, through its subsidiary, I mean, through its contractor to run the line, hadn't done adequate safety survey of the line. Now, some of it might not have been found out, I don't know. I do know they said they did a survey, but this has a lot of concern on my part. And I had some understanding about that, perhaps, when I realized that there's an arrangement between the operator, and it has a lot to do with how much money they get out of their operations and how much they don't pay when they don't have any operations that are making money. So I, I just have some issues with that whole arrangement. The other aspect that I'm trying to expand here is, I'd like to see something that runs on that line. I'd like to have that conversation, but I'd like it to be something that actually represents what Santa Cruz would actually like, and I haven't seen that discussion. I would like to be the lone voice, perhaps, on that committee that tries to expand this discussion. I am for, and I was for, the, the bond that passed. I was also very active, because I'm on the senior council, to get some money out of the, the bonds so that senior transportation was being better supported. When I talked to the head of the RTC, went to a presentation, and he readily admitted that the seniors hadn't been at the table at that discussion. And when I'm, when I look at the fact that the survey showed that the largest percentage of positive responses in this community, Santa Cruz, by and large, was from the seniors, and they weren't getting their due, even though they're the ones that were gonna be the best benefit if the money went to the transportation for their, like Lyft line and such. And I really thought that was not looking at this community. So that's why I feel strongly about stepping into this. I think the community of this area needs other ideas to represent on that committee. Thank you.
Well, shall we, one a motion? I can't make one.
I'll make a motion and nominate. Mike Terminy is our representative, and Jacques is our alternate.
Is there a second? Is there another motion?
I'd like to motion that Jacques is the representative, and Mike or anyone else who is interested would be the alternate.
I'll second.
Any other discussion?
I'll second to the first one, but I thought I could, but that's okay. Let's go over this one.
All in favor?
Roll call, please.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Terminy?
No.
Councilmember Bertrand?
Aye.
Councilmember Bhatorff?
No.
Mayor Harland?
Aye.
I'm gonna decline the alternate position and let another council member take that.
Is anyone else interested in that? Do the alternates go every time?
Yes. They just don't get the fifty dollars.
Wow.
It's big bucks at the RTC.
Yeah. Okay, well, let's think about the alternate and, and come back to that. Let's go to the next category.
We're almost complete. One I, I wanted to highlight was for the Metro Board. There was some inconsistencies in the, the term. Councilmember Bhatorff has been serving on there. Standard for the RT, for Metro is a four-year term, and of course, until the recent election, we weren't certain about the remainder of the two terms. The council has the option of reappointing or continuing his appointment for two years or for a four-year term, as I understand from the RTC. So an additional two years would be a four-year term, which is the standard for a director on Metro.
But the directors can resign anytime.
But they can, they can resign anytime, or we can-
Switch out.
We can switch out in two years. So our description had just to be continuet for two more years for a total of four, but it is council's discretion if they wish to make it a four-year appointment. Or if someone else wants to, again.
I'd like to finish my term. I had to wait two years because Ron Graves, I allowed him to finish his two-year term, so I didn't start it till two years into my-
Yeah, so it's a matter of a two or a four-year.
It was a courtesy to Ron to let him finish his term, so I sat back for two years.
Yes, so it is council's discretion if you wish to make it a two-year or a four-year.
Well, let's just go with four if that's the standard.
Okay.
I mean, it's kind of indefinite. You can do it, you know.
Exactly, if you're scheduled-
Probably for fourteen.
Very good, then we will make that a four-year appointment and through 2020. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, the Finance Director whispered in my ear during your deliberations that we needed to revisit the Finance Advisory Committee, so I'll ask him to come up and explain what we need to do here still.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Just to revisit the Finance Advisory Committee, all current members reapplied. Councilmember Peterson just appointed Marilyn Waters, meaning that one of the people who applied will not be on the committee, so we would need motions for appointments for the other members.
Well, we don't have, who hasn't made an appointment? Did everyone make one?
So the, the only appointment that was made for is by Councilmember Peterson.
Well, Bhatorff-
I said, I said, I said, I said, yes.
He reappointed, and Mayor Harland reappointed Will Sullivan, and-
Well, Dennis wasn't here to appoint Nathan Brown.
Nathan's no longer on there.
There's no Dennis, there's no Nathan.
Thank you, thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay, next.
Good?
Yeah, good.
I think we're done.
Are we?
Okay.
That's it? Okay, the next item is the Consent Calendar, and these are items, relatively minor items taken in one motion, and, but they can be pulled for separate discussion by a council member, anyone in the audience, or staff members. Would anyone like to pull an item for separate discussion? Jacques?
I'd like to make a statement about item nine A.
Okay.
So when I applied or ran to become city council, I sought a lot of advice, and one of the best pieces of advice I thought about was, I will make mistakes. So with all humility, I'd like to say that my vote on item A, which was for the C, General Manager, or basically the lead of our city, is wage increase, I fully support. I voted no at the time because I had a procedural issue, and if I had gone through the proper homework, I would've taken care of that. So I am saying this publicly because I wanna say to the staff of Capitola that I have all the support I could give to Jamie, and I think the other city council members do too, and this was due to an issue on my part. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to discuss an item or make a motion on the consent calendar?
I'm saying.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I'm gonna recuse myself, I mean, excuse myself, because I'm not feeling well, so I'm gonna ask the Vice Mayor to take over. Please, thank you.
Feel better.
Thank you, thank you.
I'll stay right where I am, if that's okay with everyone.
Sure. I can hear you from there.
Feel better.
Yeah, take care.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the first general government public hearing, and that is the appeal of Planning Commission approval of a design permit, coastal development permit, and variance for a two-story, single-family residence at 105 Sacramento Avenue, and I believe we had a noticing issue on this. Could you explain, Rich?
That's correct, Mr. Vice Mayor. We, we did have a incorrect date on the postcards. Unfortunately, they were mailed out to residents within 300 feet and identified January 17th rather than the 12th. We became aware of that before we could fix the mistake, therefore, we're requesting this item be continued until the next council meeting on January 26th.
Is there a motion? Are there any questions of staff, first of all?
Motion to approve staff recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
May I just, can we just be certain, I think we're good, that just, if there were anyone who did, because some of the notices were correct, if there is anyone who wishes, is in attendance that wishes to comment at this time?
It's, I don't know that we do-
If they've sat through this-
Do we need to do comment on a continued item?
You do not, but Councilmember Peterson does have a comment that she would like to make.
Oh, oh, certainly, well, if there's a motion, a second, we will not take a vote yet. Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, I'm going to need to recuse myself from this vote when it comes to the council, so I will be abstaining from this particular vote about moving it.
And that's because of proximity of residence?
Yes, I'm sorry, because I am too close, within the 500-foot FPPC conflict of interest.
Good, and it's my understanding that when this item comes back, Councilmember Harland will also be recusing herself because she was one of the appeals, one who filed an appeal.
Actually, I have looked at that issue pretty carefully and concluded that there's not a disqualifying conflict of interest in her case.
Good.
I'll be happy to send a memo to the council explaining the rationale for that.
And is that because she was not the only appellate? Or, because we were taken up short last year because of this very issue?
Yes, I sent a memo to the council some time ago informing you of a, of a case that came out of the City of Newport Beach involving a council member that appealed a Planning Commission decision and a Court of Appeal decision that said that, having done so, the council member was disqualified for, from participating in the decision due to an inherent bias based on the fact that the council member was an appellant.
Right.
When this question came up, I analyzed Councilmember Harland's situation in light of that recorded appellate decision and reported appellate decision, and there are some very significant distinctions between that case and this that led me to the conclusion that there was not a disqualifying conflict of interest. First, the appeal that was made by Councilmember Harland was in accordance with the procedures outlined in your own municipal code, whereas the Newport Beach Muni Code did not authorize council member appeals of Planning Commission decisions. And second, the council member who appealed that decision had, there was evidence in the record that the council member had a predispo, disposition to vote against the appeal.
Interesting.
And Councilmember Harland's appeal was on the basis simply to have a further review by the city council, so, so that's a distinction.
Thanks for that clarification.
Yeah.
And we don't need to have comment on this, but if there's anyone in the audience who came for this item and would like to make a statement, please step up. You're welcome to. Seeing no one?
I'm sorry, could you review the motion first and second?
The first and second is Bhatorff and Bertrand?
Thank you.
And we can take a roll call vote, so you can log the abstention by Councilmember Peterson.
Councilmember Peterson?
I abstain.
Councilmember Bertrand?
Aye.
Councilmember Bhatorff?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Terminy?
Aye.
We'll move on to the introduction of an ordinance amending Chapter 17 dot 98 of the Capitola Municipal Code pertaining to wireless communications.
Thank you. So the wireless chapter, as you're all aware, is part of our zoning code, and we're undergoing a comprehensive update of the zoning code. The original intent was to update the wireless chapter in conjunction with that larger effort. But as you recall, last year, we were sued by Verizon Immobilit for denying a cellular facility on 41st Avenue. That lawsuit culminated with a settlement agreement, in part which the city agreed to adopt an updated wireless ordinance no later than February, the end of February 2017. The consequence of that is we're moving forward with the wireless ordinance separately from the larger zoning code update, and that's why we're here this evening. So tonight, it will be the first reading of that ordinance, and then we'll return either at the next city council meeting or in February for hopeful adoption of this updated ordinance.
Any questions?
Just a quick summary of the revisions that-
No, I was just asking if any questions up to this point? Kristen, no, we're good? Carry on.
Just a quick highlight of the summary of revisions that are in this code update. It's been updated to comply with existing state and federal law. We've established four tiers of permit review, which I'll discuss further. We've established preferred sites and locations for cellular facilities. The new code would require facilities to be concealed or stealth whenever feasible, and the new code would provide a height exception because today's code does not. So in terms of the revisions to comply with state and federal law, we've revised the definitions to mirror those that are found in statute, and we've also eliminated the coastal and residential setback requirements that are in the current code, which were alleged by the plaintiff to effectively prohibit facilities in the majority of the city. These include a 3,000-foot setback from the coast, 500 feet from most residential zones, and then 500 feet from any park, schools, or nursing homes. The length of approval for cellular facility permits would be increased five to 10 years, consistent with FCC rules, and would also add a new ministerial permit process for Section 6409 permits, which I'll explain a little further. So the Section 6409 permits are based on the Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act and subsequent FCC orders, which are aimed at accelerating wireless facility permitting. Act and subsequent FCC orders, which are aimed at accelerating wireless facility permitting. It essentially applies primarily to modifications to existing facilities, co-locations, and removal and replacement of existing facilities. Under Section 6409, state and local governments are preempted from denying any of these requests that involves co-location, removal, or replacement of equipment on an existing tower. The other key thing to be aware of with the Section 6409 process is it does establish a shot clock, which requires the city to complete processing of an application within 60 days, and the failure to do so could lead to an automatic approval. The one rub with this process is it effectively precludes any public notice hearings or appeals, because you simply can't fit it into a 60-day window. So, the four tiers of permit review that we've established in the draft code are as follows. The tier one would be the 6409 permits that we just described. These would require the site to be posted. The director would make a decision, and they're non-appellable. The next tier permit would be issued through an administrative permit. These require the site to be posted, director's decisions, and these would be appealable on like 6409s. The tier three permit would be a minor use permit. This is a new type of permit that we've established in the zoning code update. This would require the site to be posted and notices to be mailed to neighboring residents. The decision would be issued by the director. They would be appealable, and there would also be a call for hearing procedure, which is new. This would allow a neighboring resident to request a hearing without filing an appeal fee, and after that request, staff would bring the matter to the planning commission for decision. And then finally, the process that's most commonly used today, the tier four, which is a conditional use permit, kind of standard public noticing procedures, including newspaper ad. Planning commission makes those decisions, and ultimately, those decisions could be appealed to the City Council. So, this chart kind of breaks down what types of facilities fit into each of these tiers. I'm not going to go through each and every one of these, but certainly if you have questions, I would be happy to give more detail. Principally, modification of existing facility will be these kind of ministerial 6409 permits. The tier twos are really going to be facilities that are located within a building and are fully concealed in commercial or industrial zones. The tier threes are generally going to be pole-mounted facilities in right-of-way and building and facade-mounted facilities in mixed-use neighborhoods where there's a residential component. And then finally, tier fours are facilities that are not concealed, new towers, like the monopole that you see on Kennedy or on Capitol Road near the mall, or facilities in residential or open space zones. So, the preferred sites and locations, the preferred sites identified by the draft ordinance would be sites on city-owned parcel first. The reason for this is the city, as the property owner, would have ability to negotiate the design, the terms of an agreement, without even getting a discretionary approval. It's simply a land, a matter within the City Council's jurisdiction. Followed by that would be co-locations, which are within the right-of-way. Most commonly would be utility pole-type facilities. Co-locations outside of the right-of-way, so if you had an existing facility and they want to put in some new array of antennas. New base stations, a base station is pretty much any facility other than a tower. It's the language that's found in state and federal statute. And then finally, towers, which generally cannot be massed inside or outside the right-of-way, would be the least preferred of the sites. In terms of locations, we've identified that industrial zoning districts would be the highest preferred location, followed by commercial zones, and then any other non-residential zoning districts. We further broken that up by preferred locations in residential zones, where parcels with non-residential uses would be preferred over those where you do have residents on the property. I mentioned that under the new code, all facilities would be required to be concealed wherever feasible. This slide just gives kind of quick illustrations of well-designed facilities versus those which are more poorly designed and are not concealed. And I'll just cycle through these very quickly, and if you'd like me to stop, just let me know. Finally, we added a height exception to the code. The current code does not provide for height exceptions, so the planning commission often had to issue variances with very difficult findings. There's often nothing unique or unusual about the property. We just didn't have a mechanism to allow an over-height facility. New code would allow an exceedance of height of up to eight feet if certain conditions are met, including mounted on the rooftop of an existing building, being completely concealed, or if it's architecturally concealed into a building. Monopoles and towers, which really cannot be easily concealed, would have an unlimited height exception, subject to certain findings made by the planning commission. One item of note that the planning commission did change, I wanted to point out. The staff generated initial draft code. We use standard noticing procedures, which mirrored everything we did for any other land use type that required a conditional use permit. The current code has a 600-foot expanded noticing requirement. The planning commission did decide to retain that and to not use a standardized, smaller public noticing. So, the planning commission on December 1st considered this item, and unanimously voted to recommend the City Council approve the general plan update, environmental impact report addendum, and adopt a proposed wireless ordinance as presented, and staff concurs with their recommendation. We're available for any questions, and that concludes my presentation.
Questions? Done? We'll open up the public portion. Anyone who would like to speak on this item, please approach the podium.
I do have one question, sorry.
Okay, so, hold on, folks. There is actually a question.
Yes, I was trying to formulate. So, in working with the public utilities of concern with this, has this been reviewed, have we talked with their lawyers?
Wireless carriers?
Yes, right.
We've worked closely with Verizon, who is the party in the litigation. They sent a letter to the City Council this afternoon endorsing the ordinance and asking you to adopt it, so they're pleased with it.
So, the assumption is that any other carrier would be reasonably satisfying?
Well, I think they would prefer the current ordinance. It's much more aligned with state and federal law, and the ordinance that we had was very difficult for us to navigate with, because we'd always have to look at it, consult with the city attorney, to figure out what exactly can we require and not require, because our ordinance just wasn't up to date.
Okay, thank you. Good. I'm going to have you wait until Councilmember Botorf comes in, so he is party to the discussion. So, feel free to talk amongst yourselves. Thank you.
Don Kirhous, are there any moves on a federal level to address this issue so that citizens' participation can be augmented?
Not to my knowledge, or maybe, I'm just not aware of it.
The biggest participation was the Federal Communications, Telecommunications Act, which took all of our power away, basically.
Yeah.
That was the move.
Right. That's pretty much what Mike said on this, yeah. Because there was some effort, I thought, to contact Sam Farr. I know he's not a representative anymore, and that's the last I heard.
I would guess, given the climate in the current Congress, that the trend would be away from encouraging further citizen participation and...
In the general.
...of making it more and more difficult for local entities to regulate in this, in this area.
Okay, yes.
Welcome back, Councilmember. Okay, folks, public comment on this item, item 10B. Please approach the podium. State your name, if you wish, and speak to us.
Thank you, and good evening. My name is Becky Steinbruner. I'm a resident of Aptos.
Thank you, Becky. May I have time, please? Thank you.
Thank you.
Carry on.
Thank you. What I have heard here this evening is very disturbing on a citizen level. What I see is corporations dictating local government and state government and federal government as to what the people must do. I think this is a very dangerous thing. When I hear that there will be less public notice, there will be no ability to appeal, there will be no setbacks for parks, or schools, or nursing homes from these things. It's a technology we really don't know the long-term health effects. There are some studies coming out, and there are people that come and tell you about those, and I've done some research into that, too. And I think there are red flags that really need to make us all step back and be cautious, but we are held accountable to the corporations that are funding many of the studies, and we are tied by litigation threats to do their bidding. And I think this is a very dangerous state for our country, and I'm disturbed to see it here in Capitola. I understand that you, as elected officials, have to be accountable to the taxpayers, and you can't take on big liabilities, but also your first and foremost duty is to uphold the public health and safety of your constituents, of your public. And so, I urge you to take a stand and just say, "No, we're not going to do this. We refuse." And it may be costly, but I think it's a stand that people all across our country have to start doing, as we are hearing with the approaching administration. We cannot simply roll over and do the bidding of the corporations and those who are in power with the money, trying to force us to do. So, I ask you, please, don't make these changes in the name of public safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Thank you, Becky.
May I have time reset, please?
Marilyn Garrett, and this is the problem, that corporate power has a stranglehold over democracy, and we should not be dictated to by these corporate interests. And some of the facts that are not sent out in the public notice or discussed is what you have been presented with over many years. And science from 1932 to the present has demonstrated conclusively the harmful effects of microwave radiation, the biological effects. One source is BioInitiative.org. Also, Barry Trower, whose expertise is microwave radiation weaponry, and he worked in the British Secret Service in the 60s and 70s, and he says, "To my knowledge, microwave..." I can't really read this, "but this is used as a weapon, microwave radiation, to bilate people considered the enemy, and these are the same frequencies and power densities the military has used to blow up weapons and harm people, as it's used in Wi-Fi and wireless technology." The science is there. Facts don't cease to exist because they are denied, and we have a corporate dictatorship with contaminating radiation. Our rights are being violated, our right to health, our right to sanctity, our safety in our own homes, as these frequencies come through the walls. It's like an in-the-public right-of-way that belongs to the public. The parks belong to the public. We're getting, I think I gave some of you this article, "Heads in the Sand, Pies in the Sky." This is about Health Canada denies the proven dangers of microwave radiation from cell phones, cell towers, Wi-Fi, smart meters. And there's a quote here from Ollie Johansson that says that the environment today is, has 10 billion times the radiation that it had in the 1960s, and there are over 15,000 to 25,000 studies that show the harmful effects of this radiation. Do you want to force more harm, death of the bees and the birds upon the population, by going along with this? These are like approving toxic sites everywhere emitting continuous radiation. Verizon is a surveillance agency for the national security state, so we have...
Marilyn, you have to wrap up now.
Okay, so, I'm going to give you some information. I urge what Becky Steinbruner did. Do not approve Verizon's ordinance.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item?
Good evening. Keith Otto. My ask of the council is, if you're going to take action to change your wireless regulations, that before doing so, you ensure that the regulations that you're going to put into effect are the strongest possible to preserve items, including the character of the city, to maintain aesthetics, minimize impacts, blight, noise, protect both public and private views. And these are some of the things that the city of Monterey, for example, has done, all to the greatest extent possible. The community will benefit from the greatest possible transparency regarding these projects, from increased noticing, from additional public hearings, so there is an opportunity to provide input. And also, robust and sincere investigation of alternatives, with the goal being to go forward with the best possible implementations, those that have the least impact. You know, it's, all of that becomes possible with strengthened regulations rather than ones that are more relaxed. You can raise the bar, and then, if required, grant exceptions on a special case-by-case basis versus lower the bar. So, my suggestion is for the council to do just that, to review the regulations here, and to the greatest extent possible that the city can regulate and influence the implementations of these projects to do so, and to engage with the community so that they're part of whatever specific implementations come down the road. Thank you for your consideration this evening.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening. I didn't come prepared to speak this evening. My name is Patricia York, but I was handed something to read. I don't know if any of you are familiar with the Virginia Farver case, in which her son died from a brain cancer situation by living near a cell tower. And this is from the Virginia Farver, give me a megaphone. And I think some of you were provided a DVD of Take Back Your Power, in which Virginia Farver, or Ginger Farver, describes her son's brain cancers death while a student at SDSU. And in her own words, in part, she elaborated on the microwave radiation exposure linked to the SDSU cancer cluster, excuse me, cancer clusters, which included her son. And she said she started doing research about the cell tower beside NASA's Tar Hall, where Rich spent so much time. It's a GWEN, G-W-E-N, tower installed in the highest point in the campus. GWEN stands for Ground Wave Emergency Network. The antenna signals are used for police, ambulance, and homeland security networks. They're needed for cell phones and YMAX. SDSU's antennas were upgraded in the summer of 2005, around the time Rich arrived. This is her son. Their signals broadcast for 72 miles and can penetrate most structures. GWEN towers are common on campuses across the country. The towers also holds cell dishes that are part of the high performances of the wireless research and educational network. These dishes provide internet connections for San Diego SU, well, San Diego State University, the Mount Palomar Observatory, and for, I think it's Matrix America Land, I'm not certain about that word. They also link CAL FIRE and other agencies to the internet during emergencies. And the entire story can be found in Katie Singer's "An Electronic Silence Spring," would be Frank Clegg... And this book shows how radiation emitted by electronic devices can be, can cause harm, cancer, and the things that she'll talk about. Or if you got this book or DVD and read about it, so.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Who would like to begin? Ed?
We've been down this road before, and there's not a lot more than I want to add. I go ahead to move staff recommendation.
Is there a second on Ed's motion first?
I'll second that.
Okay, continue discussion. Jacques?
There was a comment about closer schools and parks and such, this ordinance address that. You know, I saw a list of preferred sites, but it seemed to me that we could probably strengthen this by precluding certain definite sites where large concentrations of people are, such as public spaces and schools, maybe even churches. I would definitely like to move such an amendment if the council would agree. I don't know if this proposal would actually address that.
So the proposed code does not have any setbacks from schools or other places of assembly? We do, as you mentioned, prioritize preferred sites and locations, and we require a carrier to demonstrate that a preferred site or location is not technically feasible to meet their coverage objectives before we would be able to approve a lower, a site lower on the preference list. I might lean over to the city attorney. My instinct is that we would not be able to legally prohibit cell towers in vicinity of schools or other places of assembly.
That's right. What we've tried to do here is strike a balance between our ability to regulate both, you know, out of concern for proximity to these types of places of assembly and public gathering places, aesthetics, and the limitations that were under, under the FCC's very stringent regulations, which are ever more complicated and difficult to interpret. We've spent many, many hours working on coming up with an ordinance that, in essence, in our view, does meet the objective of the speaker, who talked about trying to regulate this to the maximum extent we can, consistent with the limitations that were under, under federal and state regulations. And in doing so, we're replacing what, in a sense, was a much more stringent set of regulations that were in effect in the city of Capitola, that by their very effect, were unenforceable. And so, it may appear that we're softening up the restrictions. We're not. We're giving the city the tools to regulate within the limitations that were under. Whereas what we had before was really a set of regulations that were a paper tiger. They looked really great if you were interested in trying to make it difficult to put up cell towers. They didn't, they didn't serve that objective at all, as you know.
And to Jacques's point, are we required to remove restrictions with regard to distance from schools?
We don't have the ability to regulate that specific detail, but through coming up with our preferred criteria, we have some ability to push the cell tide sites in the direction that we want, which is away from schools and churches.
Thank you. Jacques, continue.
Yeah, I don't want to second guess you, but did we review other ordinances that have stood litigation efforts, et cetera?
Yeah, my associate Heather Lenhart has been working on this for months, and she's been working very carefully with a group of attorneys in the League of California Cities from all over California, that have been very carefully both evaluating what other cities have done, other ordinances that have been challenged in court, other ordinances that have withheld or been upheld against legal challenges, and also monitoring what's going on in Washington, DC, in terms of current FCC regulations and proposed regulations, and are communicating with the FCC as part of the advocacy that's done by the League of California Cities. So we're very much on top of this issue, and believe that what we have here is a work product that really is, really consistent with what cities that are really paying attention and trying to get this right are doing in California. So a lot of work has been put into this, both with my staff and with, and with the planning department to try to get this right.
Okay, thanks for that, everyone. Thank you. Kristen?
I don't have much to add. I reviewed the information provided to us in the packet. I appreciate the additional information through staff comment, and I'm for the staff recommendation.
The question raised by one of the speakers regarding Monterey's ordinance, has any specific research been done on that? Because it struck true to me.
I have not reviewed theirs. I've reviewed a number of wireless ordinances, and what we did was, we really tried to achieve what the speaker pointed out, is to tighten up our regulations from an aesthetic perspective, control the design, make these facilities as invisible as they can be, and, you know, comply with federal regulations or severely limit our ability to regulate based on perceived or real health effects.
One more question. As I look up here, the monopole, the tier three, am I interpreting that correctly, that all the other tiers we keep to, you know, CC or CR, and we can put a monopole in an R1 zone? Could that be possible?
So no, the, there would be a tier four, so if there would be a tower, and that's a residential zoning district, those would be tier four, CUP going to the planning commission.
So we can restrict tier two to CC and CR, but a tier four, a new tower, can go in an R1?
Under a CUP, correct.
That makes absolutely no sense to me.
So the idea here is that, you know, I'll pull up an image. So here's what we're talking about with, you know, monopoles typically.
Right.
We've got a couple in the city that are on the far right that I described as a naked monopole.
Right.
Those would require a CUP, no matter where they're at, whether they're commercial, residential. They would still be subject to the preferred sites, though. So if somebody came in and said, "We want to put this naked monopole in an R1 district," we would require them to demonstrate they've done an alternative sites analysis that shows that they could not put that facility anywhere else in the city in a preferred site or location and meet their coverage objectives, which would be a very difficult finding to make. A significant facility of that height.
Just in order of magnitude, I'm staggered that I could see something the height of a tree, and we all, I mean, it doesn't take a scientist to understand that that kind of a pole has a significantly greater radiation potential, whether you accept the medical information or bias or not, but significantly more powerful than, you know, a small-scale tower or unit on the side of a building.
Sure. So I don't think we can preclude it from a residential zone. I think we at least have to alarm the opportunity upon evidence that it's the only place that they could put it to meet their coverage, and the poles are...
Then why can we preclude the others? Why can we restrict the others to CC and CR?
They're not.
Bring that chart back up. Am I not reading the chart right?
Oops. So none of these say that it's not prohibited, but to qualify for a tier one, tier two, or tier three, a more streamlined permitting process, you have to meet certain criterias and be of a lower-impact-type facility. If it is a tower, the most, I think we'd most agree, from a visual perspective, the most, impactive type of facility, that would have to go through the CUP. Does that help?
Okay, so, and we have not done, Monterey doesn't stand out in anyone's mind as a, as a poster child for wonderful telecommunications ordinances?
I have not reviewed it, so I can't comment, but I would hazard a guess to say that, you know, they base it upon design and aesthetics, and it probably is similar to ours. Between now and the next year, we can certainly look at it, see if there's any other interesting, innovative-type ideas. But this is an approach that I think has been used successfully throughout California, where you try to incentivize carriers to place the facilities and locations you prefer, and to minimize the height, stature, and visual nature of the facility, by giving them an easier permitting path for those, as opposed to going to the planning commission, get a CUP, maybe go to appeal.
So if we felt that a monopole in an R1 zone, whether it looked like a flagpole or a tree, was not appropriate, we could turn it down without any legal consequences?
We could turn it down if we could, if we could show that, or if we could make findings that the carrier did not demonstrate conclusively that there was no alternative sites, which meant the intent of the code.
If you think you're frustrated, imagine being an elected official and not being able to rule or preempt federal law, because that's what the four people up here are faced with. It is infinitely more frustrating than where you sit. And I am no stranger to tilting at windmills, as you've noticed, okay, which brought the lawsuit on to begin with. I don't know why the rest of you voted with me, but I was trying to fight a good fight.
Everybody gets one, and you have it.
Thank you. So, you know, it's not, it's not even the corporate power directly, it's corporate power indirectly, because it's federal law, and we're not allowed to preempt federal law. So while I'd like to fight the good fight, I can't, with any good conscience, use all of Capitola citizens' money to fight that good fight. You know, if we were Manhattan, San Francisco, I don't know. I, my, my feeling is we could do one of two things here, and there's a motion on the floor, and if anyone wants to do a substitute motion to continue this, so that more research can be done with cities closer to us, not that our city attorney hasn't done plenty of research, but Jacques?
Yeah, I agree with you. I'm intrigued by Monterey, whatever their ordinance may be. And that's what prompted my question of our staff attorney. I wanted to ascertain if he'd already done his due diligence, and I'm aware that California League is on this too, because many cities in California are faced with the same issue. So if another councilperson would like to ask for continuance, I will support that. But at this point, I'm satisfied. But I do have another question. Since a lot of this depends on the work that the utility does to prove that this is the one and only site.
Yes.
I remember the last time I looked at that report, and, you know, in terms of a review on our part, which seems to me to be quite costly, what options do we have there? Because in a sense, we're accepting what they have determined, and I've always had a problem with that. I'm voicing it right now.
So I think you're pointing out some of the technical challenges for staff in reviewing these, which are real. You know, we're not electrical engineers, we can't look at their propagation maps, we don't have access to a lot of their proprietary data on what their coverage is. So some of it, at least the staff, were unqualified to review. In those cases, we, in the past, we have hired an independent consultant, paid before by the applicant, and contracted through the city, where they independently look at the information provided by a carrier, and they will critique it. And in some cases, we've taken that information and pushed back on carriers to look further into alternative designs or locations.
Okay, so we do have that option?
We do.
Okay.
And just in regard to...
Excuse me?
The city of Monterey, I think it's fine to continue the matter so that we can report back on that. My colleague is extremely thorough, and so...
Much appreciated.
I just, I just don't want to promise you that city of Monterey was one of the templates that she examined. I would be surprised if it were not, but I can't say that with certainty. So if that's the pleasure of the council, I don't have a problem with that, and report back.
Unless someone would like to propose an alternative or substitute motion?
I'd like to call the motion on the floor.
Is there no substitute motion?
I would like to make a substitute motion.
I don't, I'm unclear as to the secondor of the, the standing motion can make a substitute motion.
I just like to make an amendment. I mean, if...
And request a friendly amendment.
It's not, it's not an amendment if you continue it, it's a totally different motion. Okay. But I would like the opportunity to, since council has said that they were willing to do that review, I have no problem in doing that. I'd like to respect public input on this and ask for that.
Okay, let's pause.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we continue this to a future meeting.
And that is a substitute motion to...
I'd like to remind you that we do not have an open-ended timeframe to do this, just under the settlement agreement that we've reached. We have, we have some limitations on our...
What are our time limitations, so we can continue it to a date certain for the substitute motion?
I would request that it be for the 26th.
For the 26th, is that the substitute motion?
That is the substitute motion.
I will second that. It must be voted on prior to the standing motion.
The planning director informs me that we have an extremely busy meeting at that time.
We'll drink more coffee. Can I have a roll of coffee, please?
Councilmember Peterson? Aye. And this is on the alternative motion?
This is the substitute motion.
And councilmember Bertrand?
Aye.
Councilmember Bottal?
No.
And Vice Mayor Termini?
Aye. So the substitute motion prevails. This will be continued to our next regular meeting, where we'll receive a report on the review of the Monterey ordinance. And also, when you bring that back, I'd like to know if it's been tested.
Just given the agenda that we have lined up on the 26th, and I spoke out of turn, and Rich reminded me that we have until the end of February to complete the process, so if you would reconsider that and add it to the first meeting in February, it would be fine.
That's a mess, too. I don't know that there's a...
I don't know if there's an easy solution. I think we're pretty jammed up through, at least, the end of February.
The mayor will, the mayor will set the agenda, and will can bump items if she chooses, chooses. So, you know, in respect for the mayor, who is not here right now, I'll let her make that decision.
Okay.
It is continued.
Continue to this...
The 26th, if possible, at the pleasure of the mayor, and within the constraints of the litigation. We all good?
Yeah. I don't have continue as a vote option, so I will make it up.
Got it.
That's the face.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to item C, adopt a resolution setting the interest rate for tenant and security deposits for 2017. This is something brought up by councilmember Bertrand at the last meeting. Is there a staff report? And here is the man in charge of money. Thank you.
So mayor, members of council, this item was brought before you on December 8th. It was continued to today, for staff to go back, do some more research on kind of options the city could set the tenant interest rate at. Staff went back, looked at a couple of different cities, so to give you an idea of where other cities are, San Francisco charges .1 percent, Berkeley also .1 percent, West Hollywood just reduced theirs to zero, Los Angeles is .06. The city code kind of allows flexibility. We traditionally set it at the same level as Santa Cruz County, which is the passport rate. Santa Cruz County set it at .01 percent for 2017. The code allows some flexibility. It says we should use the passport rate, but if we can come up and justify another rate, that's your discretion. An idea we came up with was maybe setting at the six-month CD rate, so if tenants are collecting a deposit, they can put it in the bank in a six-month CD. When we, so as of today, that rate is .16 percent. Any questions you guys might have, happy to answer.
Questions of staff?
Yeah, my question for staff is, how easy would that be on landlords to, you know, monitor, how easy would it be us to monitor that, and also for landlords to carry that out? Do you have a sense of that? I mean...
I believe that would be a complaint filed with the, with the planning department, but I'm not 100% sure.
Yeah, I expect it would be extremely difficult to monitor and enforce that. I mean, literally, you'd have to know every landlord in town, and then require them to submit some kind of report and documentation to show that they've complied. So I don't think it would be an easy task to monitor and enforce it effectively.
Okay, that would take significant amount of staff time to do this. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything want from the public who would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Ed, you have anything to say on this at all?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything want from the public who would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Ed, you have anything to say on this at all?
I make a motion, we keep it at the existing rate of zero and avoid staff time. If there was a significant amount of money that was actually being generated here by landlords, I could see justifying this, but it doesn't exist. So, I'd say we continue the 0 percent. It would be my motion.
Is there a second? There's a second. Further discussion? Jacques, would you like to say something?
Right. So, I put this on, or I asked the council to agree to put this on, and my sentiments here are basically with tenants. And, you know, when you consider that tenants often stay in their property for a significant amount of times, and they don't have the use of that money. But also, there's the other side of the coin. When you're a landlord, you have to do whatever possible to make sure that you have some leverage in terms of payment of rent and such. And I've been a landlord, and I understand that very well since I've been in the situation where that deposit was very helpful. So, I've accepted a lot of comment on this issue, and I would agree with the staff recommendation and the original staff recommendation at the rate that you set.
Anything further to say? Then we'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. And that brings us to the end of our meeting, I believe. Oh, no. I'm sorry. I was at, my thumb slipped on the screen. Here we go.
Very important.
Very. This is truly an important, critical issue. This regards the council consideration of standby city council members. I've done it over and over for years and years. Thank you for asking this question, staff.
This, my item was brought forth because, as you've mentioned, it has been tradition to offer this opportunity. It is not required. If you followed the references to state law, it reflects on really cataclysmic and often more nuclear options for what would trigger the need for a standby council member. Since those laws were written, communication has improved, and so it is simply a request for the council, whether you wish to continue the process of nominating, swearing in standby members, or to move to more relying on us being able to get a hold of, concentrating on getting a hold of existing council in case of emergency and moving forward based on the quorum that we can establish.
So, this is a Cold War ordinance that we've been carrying for 65 years. Brilliant. Anyone have any questions of staff? Would anyone in the public like to say anything about this pressing issue? Then I'll bring it back for some lively discussion. What do you have to say?
I see no problem with this. I can appreciate the fact that this was a Cold War measure, but the fact that one of us, for whatever reason, would be unable to be reached, and the fact that I don't think we've ever used this, it doesn't hurt to just put somebody there so there is a backup. I consider to do no harm, and in the event that we did get rid of it and we needed it, we would say, "Why did we do that for no reason?" So, I would say, "I have one, you have one, we all have one." I think if Kristin picks one, we can be done with this.
Jacques? Yeah, I remember when I first heard about this, and it was sort of the thought is, like, who are these respected people in Capitola that we have as the fallback people for emergency situations? And I said, "Wow, that's pretty cool. These guys are the ones that everyone feels, you know, that good about." So, I kind of like to keep it. It gives a chance for people to stay involved and stuff, and I don't know, the way North Korea is going. Kristin, you want to say anything about this?
Yeah. You know, I'm happy to keep it. I don't see any problem with it being there.
I mean, I've had Mike Banks, who's, you know, a decorated war hero and level head and fighter pilot and amazing person, and just out of obstinance, I was thinking of nominating JoJo, but I don't know. I'm just going to go for it because he's my, you know, uncle-in-law, and, you know, he's worthy. But I guess if it's not doing any harm, why not keep the ordinances cluttered as much as we possibly can? If that's the will, how about an action, please?
Motion to continue policy.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. We will suffer through the nuclear option.
And is councilmember Peterson prepared at this time to appoint a standby council member?
Sure. I'm going to appoint Marilyn Warder as my standby council member.
So, we'll bring her into the next meeting to be sworn in.
Yeah.
We'll have ceremonies. We'll pontificate. We'll do all the good things, and that seems to be the end of the meeting. Any further comments by council? You sure? Anyone out there? You folks have weathered this entire meeting.
We do have a successor agency meeting to follow.
Oh, of course we do.
I know. I was trying to delay before the successor meeting. So, the city council meeting will be adjourned, and we will convene the successor agency to the former redevelopment agency of Capitola to order, and we will have a director's roll call. You almost made it out of here, Peter. Nice job.
Really speaking of...
Forgive me, I have to change software.
I understand. The chief and the public works director are holding you at their word. They're standing up through this meeting at attention. Just want to let you know, this is high finance. By the way, Peter, while she's digging that up, great treasures report. Thank you very much.
That's really excellent.
It's nice to hear feedback and information from citizens through the treasurer.
Thank you.
May I have a director's roll call, please?
Director Peterson?
Present.
Director Bertrand?
Here.
Director Bottal?
Here.
I think you're vice chair.
I think I'm the vice chair.
Dermody.
And yes, I'm here too. And I will let you carry the agenda because I cannot find my agenda on my screen for this part of the meeting.
There may be a colored version there, but meanwhile, we have no additional materials.
Very good.
I believe we have no additions or deletions to the agenda.
Correct. There are no additions or deletions. There's no additional material.
There is no public...
I'll ask for public comments. I see no one from the public. Any board members, staff comments? Hearing none. We'll go to the consent calendar, which is the successor agency's minutes, the check register. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to adopt consent calendar.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We'll move on to appointments to the oversight board and successor agency to the former Capitola redevelopment agency. Appoint mayor's representative and representative from organized employees. Do you want to do a staff report? Because I've been doing this for the last five years, but if it seems important enough, Jacques can take this one over too. You deserved it. I'm sorry.
I knew you would say something like that.
It's a big one.
I knew that. We meet about every three months for about six minutes.
So, that would be once a year for about three minutes.
Oh, we're cutting it back? Okay.
Yeah. So, we only meet once a year now. The meeting is actually scheduled for tomorrow.
Yes.
We'd appreciate if Mike comes, if Mike would be willing to continue.
Okay. And what about the employee representative? Is this okay?
Employee representative would be Brian Van Saan this year.
Oh, okay. Good. Good, our man Brian. Wonderful. So, that is on the table. I see no one from the public to speak on it. So, what's the council's pleasure?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We'll carry on once again. Approval of the Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule, or ROPS for short, from July 1st to June 30th.
Just really quickly, no real changes to our ROPS, the Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule, for July 1st, 2017 through June 30th of next year. Continuing on the obligations that have already been approved through the state, the one change that we're recommending is full payment of the loan and repayment agreement that the state reinstated two years ago. We originally planned for a five-year payback. Since there's money available in the funds, we're recommending that we pay that back as soon as possible, which would be this ROPS. Other than that, we continue our obligations with Millennium Housing, with the Housing Authority to provide rental assistance, and also a little bit for administrative costs.
And we have managed to get back the $400,000 that we were dickering about?
Correct.
So, that will come back to us?
Correct.
With this ROPS.
That's correct.
Motion to approve ROPS schedule?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That concludes the meeting of, and I have to read this whole title because it's too good, "To the City of Capitola Successor Agency to the Former Capitola Redevelopment Agency." The meeting is adjourned. Good night, Capitola. It's been just a joy.